Okay, we're on. Live.
Good evening. This is the B1 Working Committee meeting, July 16th, at 7:00 PM in the Room 124 Town Hall. We have four members from the B1 Working Committee tonight. We're going to be going through a zoning recommendation as part of the work that's been going on with the grant, looking at the B1 zone. And we have, the planning board is, a couple of members of the planning board are here tonight to invite you to listen in on to discussion. We know that, as we learned more recently, that a special town meeting in the fall will be November 19th. So our goal is to hopefully have something that we can present at the November town meeting. We still have a ways to go yet. We'll have to go over the presentation tonight. There'll be discussions at a planning board meeting. I'd like to get to, if the B1 committee isn't necessarily available, I'd at least like to send out an invitation to the property owners within the B1 zone to be able to go through some of the recommendations and then offer up their comments. So I would like to look to do something probably early, probably early September, I guess. Maybe, maybe actually, you know what, maybe even the middle of August, now that I think about it. Because the next planning board meeting will be August 5th. And hopefully, we might talk a little bit more at the August 5th meeting about the recommendations. And then, yeah, I think, probably think about it, maybe the middle of August, have a meeting with the property owners. And like I said, to be flexible as far as schedule goes, we might do maybe an evening one, and then do one during the day to offer up two different sessions for people to be able to come in depending on the work schedule. That's what we want to do. So now, I'll turn it over to Josh. You can work through our presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Richard. Again, my name is Josh Fialla. I'm Principal Planner with MAPC in the Land Use Department there. I've been helping the town of Norfolk with the B1 district zoning study. We've been at it since January or so.
Yeah, thereabouts.
And have had, I think this is our fourth committee meeting. Just a reminder, since it's been a couple of months, last committee meeting, we had reviewed the results of the community meeting, the community meeting held in April, and looked at how those results informed where the zoning would head. It seemed pretty clear. So this, the zoning recommendations in the outline report, which we have before you this evening, I'll walk through with you. And it's the result of that process with the community. And then also, if you recall, the community survey, which we had over 500 responses. So we are feeling like we have a very solid basis of community engagement to be working from. And have now, zoning recommendations, which I feel confident in, are really getting at the goal of this process, which was to open new mixed-use opportunities in the town center and invite future investment, which isn't happening today. And I think that this zoning recipe, if you want to call it that, that we've put forward, would achieve that. And now, I think with your feedback, the resident feedback that Rich was talking about, and then also the planning board feedback, we'll just hopefully strengthen this package which we have before you and get it ready for town meeting. One quick question before we get into the details of the work I have. When would the warrant be due for the November town meeting?
From discussions with Life Robinson, the town industry, I think they're presently working on the schedule for the fall warrant. I think it probably would, I think we should think about September.
Yeah.
I think that's the middle of September-ish.
Middle to end of September would probably be a good target, a safe target.
Because that'll really drive how we want to wrap this up, to make sure that we're really lined up and everyone's on board with the recommendations for that deadline. Another, sort of, just bringing everyone up to speed, when we first set out on this process, we had a end of June deadline, which was a funding deadline, but we've actually spoken with our primary funder, which is the Mass Housing Partnership, and asked for an extension, which they've granted us. So that relieved the pressure to finish it by June, which is good, since we're sitting here in the middle of July now. But I think that it's just a benefit in terms of aligning with that town meeting's schedule and making sure that we're able to help you along the way to get you to that goal. So that's all great. So our agenda this evening really is to focus on the draft recommendations, which you have in the outline and draft report before you. It's not, it's not complete as a report. There are certain aspects of it which are still in process. The biggest holes are sort of further investigation of stormwater and wastewater implications of the zoning recommendations. And we couldn't really get moving on those in earnest until the zoning recommendations really started to take shape. So those are following now. And we will, if there are, out of the discussion this evening, major changes we want to make to zoning recommendations, it's good to know that as soon as possible, just because that other work is kind of dependent on it. The design guidelines, I have a preview of that this evening for you. I haven't even, Rich will be previewing it this evening as well, so it's, it's in the package you have. And I also have, I printed out nine copies and brought them with me, so I don't know, Rich, if we want to share some of those with other people in the room, since they're not all being used up here.
Sure.
So it'll probably be easier, because I'll be walking through this document. I have it that I can put on the screen as well.
It's a little bit, the design guidelines are...
Thank you, Rich.
So first, let's just start with this report.
There's one more for Aaron.
So in the zoning recommendations, the zoning recommendations, which start on page nine, are, actually, let me just stop myself there. Before we get to zoning recommendations, this draft report will actually be filled in a little bit more and have more of a dialogue and commentary about the process and community feedback which we've received to date. I think it'll more closely mirror the full presentation which we gave in that community meeting. So it'll really outline Norfolk's town center, the progress that has been made to date, the planning studies which have led to this point in time, the community support which has been expressed for this type of work, and really lay the groundwork through the many years of effort which the town has been had underway, which this study is a result of, and give people that context to understand where this is all coming from. That's not all in there yet.
Josh, what was this report targeted to?
I mean, it's the, it's the only report that we'll produce, so it's really a target, it's supposed to be accessible enough that anyone could pick it up and understand what it's about, but it also has, there's no sort of other technical documents. So all of the sort of build-out analysis and those more technical aspects of our study are part of this report. And it will be, we can decide, as we talk about the community outreach effort moving up towards town meeting, if we want to have like a one-page summary instead of a, whatever this ends up being, a hundred-page document for people to get into it, we can, we can work with you on that to produce something that's...
So is this, or this, or the, certainly the data, and this is the support for any warrant that goes to town meeting in November?
Correct. And the warrant would not likely include all this, it would just include the zoning language that's recommended.
Right.
So this would be the background to provide that support. And then, parts of it, pieces of the presentations we've already presented, you know, that can be all repackaged to make sure that there's a good lead-up to that warrant effort, so people understand what this is about. And we're certainly, I'm certainly available to help in all those aspects. So getting towards the zoning recommendations themselves now, starting at page nine, they do, they basically are presented in two ways in this outline report. One is a sort of side-by-side comparison with the current zone, the B1, the section I of the zoning bylaw, the B1 zone, that followed by our recommended language, and we've tried to organize it sort of section by section. And then, that, those, that comparison is followed by a brief commentary about why we've made those changes. So we've tried to be very transparent, and I've kind of put down everything that I was thinking as I was going through this. And then that's followed by the complete zoning recommendations, just cleaned up as the new, the new bylaw, the new recommended section I. So you can, it might be helpful to even look at those side-by-side. I, I think it's helpful to look at them in comparison, but it's also, I think, a little confusing because it's just harder to keep track of. So I, in doing this work, I've actually found myself going back and forth between the two versions. But the, what I have on the screen is a summary, I think of the high-level changes that are recommended here in this package I have before you. The first is that the boundary of the zone, we've looked at sort of some of those parcels on the edges and thought about if it made sense to bring a parcel in or take one out or any of that. And I, I think at this time, it doesn't really make sense to do any zoning boundary changes. It makes more sense to get the zoning working appropriately than in the future, if there's another property or parcel that wants to be a part of town center, that can be another conversation. But I think it just, there's not a clear benefit to changing the zoning boundary now, and it might just get confusing to people why that's happening. So those parcels which are in B1 today would be in B1 in the future under these recommendations. Then the other recommendations, there's one that does have to do a little bit more with the geography of the zone, and that's the distinction between the sub-districts which are there today. So you have the core zone and then the outside core zone, so the out, B1, just B1 plain, I guess, and B1 out. And I, the more I looked at it, the less I saw a necessity to have that distinction between those two. It's not a very big district. I think most of the properties which are in it can contribute to the town center in the same way. They don't need to be differentiated. It's not that spread out. So I thought it was just, it was more confusing than beneficial to have those sub-districts. So I think it just clarifies things, just make it, you've got a B1 district and it has certain characteristics, and all the parcels have those characteristics in the same way. Similarly, there's the planned multi-lot development option under the current B1, which I also found to be both confusing in the way it was integrated into the B1 district, but also, in, I, my understanding of the type of development that it would produce, I think is counter to the vision for what the B1 parcels should be. In that it's more of a smaller lot, higher-density cluster development, similar to what you're seeing from like a Boyd's Crossing, I think would be a result of that planned multi-lot development, and less similar to, I always forget the address, but your new next-door neighbor here at Town Hall.
Eighteen Union?
Yeah, eighty-eight, or...
Eighteen?
Eighteen, Union Street, that's right. So, and that's a more compact, probably single-building vertically-mixed project, which is in the two or three-story range. So I didn't see, and this is maybe help from the town in terms of if it's been applied successfully, or there's someone that sees a really strong use for the planned multi-lot development, but I personally, kind of looking at it with fresh eyes, didn't see the need to keep that going forward. There were some, the other big moves were more trying to make the recommended zoning more straightforward and, I think, a little bit better organized. And that was basically taking a lot of, a lot of things that were kind of all over in section I before, and consolidating them in a lot and building requirements. So that covers really the building height, the lot coverage, the density requirements, all those things, under lot and building requirements. And then complementing that with lot and building standards is another, another section which included any standard which is about pedestrian circulation, where parking's located, all of that stuff gets put in those sections. So those two really clean up the organization in my mind. Then the others will, I think, be well illustrated by the build-out analysis, which I have some images of as well. But reducing the minimum lot size, I think, was a necessary move to provide the opportunity of the B1 district to more parcels in the district. And you'll see parcels that were effectively eliminated because of the current minimum lot size. Removing the bedroom limitations and the building footprint limitations on density of future development, which I, I'll explain what the issue is there, but on smaller lots it worked okay, but then as soon as you get into a larger lot, it basically eliminates feasibility of development, just because of that limitation of scale. So if I remove that limitation of scale, what I did add back was floor area ratio, which is another density measure, but that density measure isn't, it's relative to the size of the parcel. It's not absolute. The density measures had before were relatively absolute, so it didn't scale with the parcel size. And then also recommended reducing the required parking. And the parking, provision of parking is another interaction with density, the amount of density you're able to achieve on a certain site. So by reducing parking, you're able to add more building area on certain large parcels. So that's, I think, the big, what is in sort of a Cliff Notes summary version incorporated into these changes. And then you can see, and we can go line by line in a minute if you'd like, but I'll continue just a few of this, these overarching analyses and thoughts that came out of this. So the build-out analysis and the parcel analysis, I think, are very instructive to making these types of zoning changes because they help us imagine what the changes will result in. And of course, these are all, I mean, the real calculations, but it's hypothetical in that we're not, I'm not a developer, I don't have money on the line, I'm not trying, like, I did put on a hat of like trying to maximize the yield of these parcels, but of course, there are, I'm not, it's not detailed enough to like try to figure out every nuance of the language or, you know, get every little last square foot or unit out of a parcel. So they're, they're best expressed as a range when you do these types of build-out analyses. And they're, they're an analysis that happens over time. So we have a range of total build-out this zoning could result in, but it will not happen overnight. This will happen over two, three, five, 10 years or more. And it will happen on a parcel-by-parcel basis as those parcels and owners' circumstances align with redevelopment opportunities. So the first part of the analysis is what you see on the screen here, which was a parcel analysis, looking at those parcels which are likely to change in the near term, likely to change in the longer term. So the near term would be the green parcels, they are, many of which are literally greenfield sites in the context of Norfolk Town Center, which is sort of as, as prime and ready to go as a site as you can get. The yellow parcels haven't been, haven't seen a recent redevelopment-type investment and would, could see the potential for redevelopment as the economics of the town center improve over time. The red parcels have either redeveloped recently or have other conditions or circumstances like the town library or the town hall, or other, like Boyd's Crossing, for example, or MBTA properties. So those are sort of the categories. They're either municipal, MBTA, or recently, recently redeveloped. So you can see, that actually takes a fair amount of acreage out of the town center in terms of potential for change. So the, the exercise which I went through was to think about each parcel relative to the current zoning circumstances versus the recommended zoning circumstances. And each one resulted in a very simple massing diagram with parking shown to sort of make sure that the amount of parking that's required could fit on the site, that the site setbacks, wetlands that exist on the site, site, building height or density constraints are all accommodated within these diagrams. And that results in a number of square feet and units that could be produced on each of these properties. And then that can be summed and totaled for the entire district and then compared to the recommended zoning. So that's, that's the process we went through. And this is all outlined on page 43. And basically, I've written up a description of the methodology on page 43 of what I'm explaining to you now. So in this diagram, the, and these diagrams are also in your handout. But the, again, the red, I didn't do anything because those are parcels unlikely to change. The green has new footprints on them because those are the parcels likely for redevelopment. And the, the new color, pink in this case, is that depending on how you read and interpret the current zoning language, they may need a special permit or a variance or some special permission to proceed as a development. For example, one of the things that's unclear in the current zoning language is whether the 50-foot buffer to an adjacent residential zone crosses the street or doesn't cross the street. So if it, if that buffer requirement crosses the street, then it would make development on parcels such as this one here very difficult, because you cannot put even an accessway in that buffer. So it would effectively eliminate the frontage of those properties and not even allow you to gain access into them. So I mean, I'm not sure if that's been clarified through approvals in past town projects or not, but that's something that we'll want to clarify in the future language. Yes?
Can I just point out one question quickly?
And ask a question. Did you take into account the, the current 40B applications that are hitting a couple of those pieces of property?
I did.
Okay.
So I know, I know about them. I didn't, I think the 40B site plans are an interesting part of this conversation. And I didn't necessarily show a site layout similar to what the 40Bs are showing, but I, I know about them. And I, what I will say about them, it's a good, good point to bring up right now in the conversation, actually, is that under current zoning, I think what you're seeing, so if we look at this, and I'm sorry, I should have better noted the addresses and names of these properties.
Twenty-five Rock.
Thank you. So that property has a 40B application. And as illustrated here, what you can achieve on that site under current zoning is a very small building footprint. And so that's then forcing a property owner or developer on that property to look to other mechanisms like 40B to have a viable and economically productive development there. So I think effectively, your, your current zoning isn't necessarily like, it is stopping development, but it's not stopping change. I mean, it's stopping development that's within your...
Control.
...control under the current zoning or through guidelines or other means. But through mechanisms like 40B, they, those who want to make development happen will find a way to make happen, circumventing those regulations.
Thank you.
So one of the, so then one of the ways that the zoning recommendations are trying to help the town is actually to provide enough opportunity that you will keep those future development proposals within zoning, and then can continue to guide them with the guidelines and can continue to have them under the more normal review procedures and processes of the town, which would involve the planning board and the design review board, rather than sort of just skipping past all of that. And whether, so that's, that's one of the hopes and intentions. Whether or not a developer and property owner would choose the futures, new future zoning as opposed to a 40B project they perhaps already have lined up is another question, I think, and that would, that would be very dependent on their own circumstances. So this, and I think all, so all those pink parcels here that you see fall into one of those categories where, so for example, these are all the same, basically. If the residential buffer is considered to be across the street, it would be at the frontage of these properties again, because there's a residential district across the street. And then they would need special permission to develop a entry frontage, or entry, entry road into the property from that, into that buffer. And so it, under the current zoning, I think the conclusion here was, if your part, if the property is very close to the minimum lot size, which today in the zoning is 30,000 square feet, then you probably could fit a reasonably-sized development and make it work okay, like is happening next door. As soon as your parcel gets larger than 30,000 square feet by any amount, then it, the current density limitations really eliminate the possibility for development there. So that was what I was finding. And so that's basically what we've tried to loosen up, is removing some of those density, density limitations, both through the limitations on the number of bedrooms on a site, which is a maximum of 16, and limitations by the way of the amount of parking that's required. And limitations on the footprint of a building, which has certain conditions around it, but basically, the simple way to boil that down is, a building footprint cannot be larger than 15,000 square feet. There are some exceptions for municipal buildings or for supermarkets, but for most buildings, it's 15,000 square feet, which is another pretty intense limitation. So there's, so all of those parcels are larger and would basically be, are, from the parcel analysis, potential opportunities, but from the current zoning are really not. So this is a diagram showing an illustration under recommended zoning, and you can see some of the footprints get larger and start to fill up the parcels more. The one thing I would say about this diagram is that it, it doesn't account for the design guidelines which are now taking shape. So that, I mean, these things are always a little time-consuming, but this is probably a less, this could, this diagram could be refined to look better in terms of the footprints and the way that the massing is arranged to comply with the design guidelines which are now taking shape. I think this is probably a little bit, this looks a little aggressive in terms of how the parcels might fill out, and I think the, the design guidelines would help in that So this, I, but I, I think you can see here, at least, maybe if I flip between the two. So you can just see how much more full many of the parcels are. And it's not that fullness is the absolute goal and desire here, but I think giving flexibility so that you have enough opportunity to actually proceed with these investments is, is really what we're trying to achieve here. And this, I think some of those changes have involved reducing the 50-foot buffer down to a 30-foot buffer. So that buffer which is associated with the residential adjacency, clarifying that that buffer does in fact only apply to areas which are immediately abutting and adjacent to a residential district, not across the street from a residential district. And then, again, like I just mentioned, removing all of those density regulations and adding in a new density regulation, which is the floor-to-area ratio. And we've been able to, based upon this analysis, establish a 0.6 FAR, which is floor-area ratio. And that, so that basically gives you a .6 amount of building square footage of the total size of your parcel. So it's a, it's a multiplier, basically. And we found that, given the other constraints to accommodate parking, the building itself, the landscape requirements, and all of those things put together, we weren't ever really achieving anything higher than a .6. So it's really kind of a safety valve to make sure that you don't have any really runaway density or over, you know, overly developed property going on in the, in the town center. And then the, the important things here that are occurring is that each of the buildings are facing the street frontage, the parking is to the rear of the buildings, the buildings are encouraged to be mixed-use on the ground floor, the upper floors can be all residential. We have not, so one of the things I have also in your, I didn't put a slide up for it, but it's a good time to talk about building height as well. And on page... And on page fifty-six, one of the last eleven-by-seventeen fold-out. So we had talked about in the community forums about building height explicitly and had discussion in the, on the community survey as well. And there was a, a preference expressed from the community between a two and three-story height. There was a little more preference for building height occurring at the community forum, but it was a lot less attended than the community survey participation. And the, and that was in the three to four-story range. So I tested both kind of a three-story approach and a four-story approach. And to me, I think the four-story approach, which you can see on the right side of that page, looks out of character and out of scale with Norfolk Center. But I think it was an important test to see what, what, what it did look like and what those differences were. But I do think maintaining a three-story height limit, which is what is there today, would be more in line with protecting the character of Norfolk Town Center. And I think hopefully make it more, make, make the community more receptive to this package of zoning changes. And I think that the, what we were finding is it wasn't necessarily the building height anyway that's that major inhibitor. It's really those density limitations which are in there today. So I think that's an important point to make. Then maybe what we can do, I'll just close up the conversation on the build-out analysis. But if you look at, at those tri-folds, you can see the diagrams which I just showed you. And you can also see the detailed spreadsheets which are associated with that visual analysis which is on the screen. And those are a parcel-by-parcel accounting of the, the build-out that's occurring. And so that's occurring for the current zoning. You can see all the numbers running across there and the future zoning. And if you look on page fifty-three, that's the current zoning. And you see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are eight parcels which are shown on the screen in gray. Those eight parcels don't meet the current minimum lot size. So they're, they're just kind of left out of the opportunity unless they were to pursue a variance or, you know, removing them from that requirement. So that was what led me to also want to reduce the minimum lot size from thirty thousand square feet, which it is today, to fifteen thousand square feet, which captures almost all of those parcels in gray. I think one, one parcel remains out, I believe, and it was smaller, but I didn't, didn't want to take it down. I think you would have to take it down to like ten thousand square feet or something to make it work, which is getting kind of low as a minimum parcel size. The, I think the, the circumstances of that current zoning, if there's not a strong, if the parcel sizes which exist and the minimum lot size aren't well-aligned, you're effectively forcing a dynamic where property owners have to consider lot assembly or lot, um, division to accommodate efficient development. So this, that's another way in which this, the current zoning exploration is a little, I guess, one-dimensional or it's not as complex as it could be. I didn't go through the exercise of imagining lot assembly or lot division to make all of, the current zoning could produce more density if every property aligned more closely with thirty thousand square feet. And you could achieve that, property owners could achieve that by, you know, buying and trading or buying and selling, combining properties, dividing properties, subdividing properties. And that would be a, a very different result of this process and exercise. But I thought there was, there was so much hypothetical thinking to achieve that type of scenario that it was just best left alone. But that, that would be a potential here is that if current zoning was left the way it is, you might start to see people trying to create more parcels which are very close to thirty thousand square feet because that's kind of the sweet spot of the current zoning. And they would be doing that by combining parcels, separating parcels. So that the alignment with fifteen thousand square feet as a minimum lot size brings almost all the parcels into the fold except for, I believe it was this parcel that's kind of underneath half of the building here. And I believe the way that, that property's working today, it probably would be assembled with another anyway. So I think fifteen thousand is a, is a good recommended number for that. And then finally closing out this build-out discussion because it's, I think what people are most interested in often in these exercises, what, what are the numbers? What do the numbers say? So if you look on page forty-six, I think that's the best effectively, sorry, start on page forty-four for the current zoning. The the existing zoning could yield between eighty-two thousand and one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial or retail area under this analysis and between one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty residential units. And so that, again, that's assuming effectively that most of the ground floor is commercial use and then upper floors are residential use. That, that could be different. Those assumptions could be different. You could have more units if you had less commercial space, for example, under these calculations. But that's just a, a very straightforward assumption. It's like what's on the ground floor is commercial, what's above is residential. So that's where that breakdown comes from. Using those same assumptions, under the current zoning, let's call it, just, I'll use the high end of the range just so it's easier to compare. So under the current zoning, it was one-hundred-and-twenty, thirty-two thousand square feet, commercial or retail with two-hundred-and-fifty residential units. If you switch to the proposed or recommended zoning on page forty-six, you go to two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand square feet of commercial or retail area and five-hundred-and-fifteen residential units. And that also is expressed by a range. And the range for the recommended zoning would be between one-hundred-and-forty-five and two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand square feet of commercial or retail and two-hundred-and-eighty-five to, to five-hundred-and-fifteen residential units with that same basic assumption of ground floor commercial and upper floor residential. So depending on how you're, you're feeling about development is, probably that either seems like a lot or a little in terms of a change. I, I don't think it's that dramatic of an increase myself to, but I think the difference is that under the recommended zoning, that probably the development yield is more likely to happen than, I mean, the, the number, the projections that we're showing today are probably not likely to be achieved except any, any production that occurs under forty-B is what's more likely to occur than any production under the current zoning. So those are the, the basic conclusions of this analysis which fed into the zoning. And again, I think that those are useful numbers to just keep in mind in terms of the scale of the change that we're potentially talking about and the, the differences here. But it's not, it's not like a light switch that if you change the zoning, then automatically like that production is occurring. I think there's a lot of other things that have to happen. So let's get into, I, I'll pause there. Are there, I covered a lot just now. Are there questions on all of that?
So I have a quick question. I mean, you talk about the yields. Do you have the yields broken down by the designations of lot availability like you have on that color-coded chart there?
I did not break it down that way, but, but that would be very straightforward to do. Yes?
Because I think it would be a, a much clearer picture for people if we identified, you know, with the lots that are more likely to be redeveloped in the near future, this is what the yield would be with new zoning. Whereas if we say as a total, it's kind of like a
Yep, yep. No, I think that's a great point. That's, that's some very easy Excel work to make that happen. So yeah, we can definitely break it down that way.
Thank you.
Josh, I have a question about this, the setback, fifty, the proposed fifty to thirty. Then there's something that talks about this evergreen buffer. So if you have an evergreen buffer and the buffer has two lines and then ten feet in between each line, what have you gained? So if you're, if you're now only back thirty foot, I understand that. But then inside, I, I would assume inside that, that new, this, this business parcel now, you've got to have a buffer of, of evergreens and each, in two lines of it with ten feet in between, you're pushing the development even farther back into the lot. So, so you, you've gained twenty feet, but now you're seem to be, it sounds like you're losing it with this evergreen buffer.
Well, I think the evergreen buffer is something that we're carrying forward from the previous zoning. And I'll look back at the exact language, but my understanding was that the evergreen buffer is something that could be accommodated to occur within still thirty feet. I think fifty feet previously was, would accommodate the landscape buffer, but then would require a lot more of the, you know, twenty feet more of the property, which isn't necessarily needed for that landscape buffer. I think thirty feet is adequate to provide a substantial landscape buffer?
Well, thirty, I, I, I don't disagree with the thirty foot, but it seems like, and then there's also language about a fence. So you got a fence and you've got an evergreen buffer and, I mean, isn't that, it sounds like overkill to me.
And in this case, I think what the benefit of the recommended, recommended zoning, and those are all, I think those are details that are well-noted and we should probably look at and consider. But in this case, we're clarifying that it would only occur on those immediate abutting lines, property lines. So it would actually limit quite a bit because that, that would basically effectively make it here. If you look on the screen, follow the moving arrow. So if you look, here's one, here's another. And then along this edge. And then the, the parcel most affected just because of its strange geometry is this pink one here. And it, it really is almost surrounded by another residential zone. So that would be, I think, the most impacted, both in terms of its limitations on the geometry of the parcel, but also on the cost, like that, that would be a substantial cost to achieve those things on that perimeter of the site.
So that one, that's the twenty-five Rockwood Road, that one there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at the language to make sure that we're not, we're changing it, but we're not really getting any benefit from all the other things we're putting back in there.
Okay. That's a good point.
And, and then the other point you just brought up about the street, you know, if, if the business, if there's a residential zone across the street, does that end the limitation of the fifty feet? When you cross the street, you start over again? I would think that would make a lot more logical sense than push it back from the road.
Yes, we're, we're proposing that a residential district across the street would not
Be subject to the setback.
Yeah, would not activate the buffer requirement. Okay, any other questions about this before we move into the zoning a little more squarely?
Thank you. Peter Diamond on Seacong Street. I have a few questions, but I'll start with the floor-area ratio of point-six-oh. And there's a few lots there that have wetlands. So on that floor-area ratio, does that include the whole lot or does it disclude wetlands? How, how would you approach that? And are you going to put a definition in the bylaw for that?
Yes, we can define floor-area ratio. It's a term worth defining, I think, for sure. It's a, it's well-used in the planning and zoning and design world, but I think from a layperson's perspective, it, it, it does warrant definition and even a diagram about how that definition plays out. And then on the wetland properties, right now, it's, it's just a straight, the suggestion is a straight point-six-zero without any modifications for wetlands. There's a few properties which do have, you can see them, the area is kind of outlined here, which have some wetland area. And it will be, it will just more likely be the case in that those circumstances, a development isn't able to achieve the maximum FAR because they cannot, it'll be probably the parking which is the limiting factor there because they won't be able to achieve enough parking to support the square footage. And then they'll, they're, because they don't have the lot area, all of the lot area that's at their disposal for development use, it'll be retained as wetland. They just won't be able to approach that maximum.
So as of right now, you want to include the whole lot, square footage for the, the FAR value. Understood?
Yeah, I think effectively what happens in those circumstances is that other zoning characteristics become the limiting factors.
The next question is on I-four-A-six building height, which is currently at forty feet max. And it looks like you're going to take that to fifty feet, but still stay with three-story limit. And I'm, I'm curious how the fifty feet is needed and how the builder needs that additional ten feet. What, if you could explain that, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so that's another one. Well, probably makes sense to have some diagrams built in potentially into like the design guidelines with that, showing how the fifty-foot we think will work. I think basically the, the reasoning for that change is flexibility. And we've seen circumstances where a lower maximum building height associated with sort of, it doesn't matter the stories, but you'll see oftentimes, there's not a, a very strong, I guess, the two of, the story limit and the height limit in feet are out of sync. And you'll see disproportionate buildings as a result. So you'll see squat-first floors or roof lines which are at a very shallow pitch. And what's happening there is that there's not enough flexibility for good design, actually. So what we're trying to do is, we, as I mentioned, identified that I don't think going to four stories is appropriate. But I do think that a little bit more flexibility would allow people to have a more generous ground first floor, which is great for retail and for street vitality and character. Or have more pitch on the top of the building, on the roof, which would make the third floor space more occupiable. Because we are in the guidelines and in the zoning language suggesting that the, even though it's three stories, that the third story would be incorporated with the pitch of the roof. So that will be, the, the lower they have to keep that overall building height, the less actual building area they'll, usable area they'll get out of the third floor because the roof pitch will encroach on, say, eighty percent of that top floor. And the more that they can, if they can say build a, I don't know, three-foot wall at the third floor and then start the roof pitch there and the roof pitch is a little steeper and higher, they can get maybe ninety or ninety-five percent usable floor area out of the third floor rather than eighty percent. So it's just, those feet make a little bit of difference on the bottom and on the top.
Rich, isn't the current limit forty-six feet?
It is with the roof, yes.
I think six feet by special permit can be added.
All right, that's a good explanation. I'm still a little concerned that that might present a building that's a little too tall to fit in with the rest of the buildings in town.
Yeah.
So I'll take a look at that a little further. The next question is on I-four-A-eleven where the current bedroom limit is sixteen bedrooms with a two-bedroom max. So you're just going to change, or the proposal is to change that and take that right out and have no bedroom limit.
Correct.
And no bedroom max limit either. So that concerns me. There's no, so someone could have a four-bedroom for say, or a three-bedroom apartment. And the towns always, always embrace two-bedroom limit to And the towns always embrace two-bedroom limit to curtail the impact on the schools and such. So that one concerns me. Just a comment.
Do you want me to respond to that one?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that from our perspective, it's better to leave the zoning out of the building program and the mix of bedrooms and leave that to the developer to see how they can best position their project to make it viable. Our agency has done studies on the production of housing units and that, the production and how it correlates to school enrollments. And across our region, we found no trend line to correlate the two. So there are communities which are producing a bunch of housing units and they have declining school enrollment or vice versa. And there's no discernible correlation between the two. And I know that that's, that's data across the region, and so it's not off. Most communities just kind of laugh that one off. They say that their circumstances are very different than the regions. But we just haven't, we've been trying to, through the data, understand if, you know, housing production, what it means for the school populations. And we just can't find a pattern in it. But that being said, that, those are considerations. And I think schools and the supports for these future housing units are things that the community needs to be concerned about. But I think that the, of those two, of the two-bedroom limit, I think, I don't think it should be in there. If the town wants to discuss it being in there, I would be less, have less of an issue with that one. But I think the sixteen-bedroom maximum is really, that's one of the fundamental things that our build-out analysis is showing as sort of the non-starter for many of these properties.
On I-4A12 residential conversions, so some of the properties are all residential right now and they're in the B1. So could you explain the idea behind the residential conversions? What's allowed under your proposal? If it's a residential conversion and it comes under construction, will they have to add commercial? Will they have to convert it wholly to a mixed use? Is that what we're proposing in I-4A12?
Yeah, I think that Rich and I have talked about this a little bit, one too. There's a whole, there's a whole hypothetical area of renovations, additions, or improvements on existing facilities and how they relate to these zoning requirements. And I don't know that, I think it's starting to be a little defined here, but that whole area could probably use further definition. Or the town will just have to, and one of the approaches, the town would just effectively figure it out on a case-by-case basis. I think if an existing building is in this district today, and it's all residential today, it would be grandfathered as that use. It could effectively operate as it is, how it has, regardless of what the zoning is around it, and do whatever investments are needed to make sure that use is viable into the future. That's sort of what the grandfather clause is all about. But I, the intention of this language here is basically so that you wouldn't see, we want to retain the town center as an active economic center with commercial uses. And we don't want to do something in zoning changes that invite everyone to basically change their properties to residential uses fully. And so that's what we're trying to protect against. And what we're trying to push towards in terms of this mixed-use approach and having more active ground floor uses is one of, the intention here is not to have Norfolk Town Center be however many housing units in the future with nothing else. I mean, that's really, that would be a big mistake if that happens. And we want to make sure that the zoning isn't pushing, encouraging people to do that.
I agree, thank you. And my final question is, I brought this up at the last meeting on, I know you mentioned about five hundred housing units and so many square feet of retail and, there's no consideration on the impact to town services and the roads and whatnot. And I hope that the committee consider that. And hopefully, someone could maybe do some sort of research on how that might impact or change the road system downtown in conjunction with approval of these zoning amendments. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions?
Yeah, a couple of things pop up. One is the recommendation to eliminate PMLD, land multi-lot development. There is, in this situation, in fact, the owner just walked in, a piece of property there, one of the green ones, right across Main Street or across the railroad bridge that would lend itself very nicely to a PMLD. And I noticed in your recommendations that the frontage issue and the need to be within so many feet of the front of the property has been mitigated by allowing a second building to be placed anywhere within the lot. Something that we don't have at the moment. And I think that's a great recommendation. And I just wondered why the elimination of PMLD was recommended.
Yeah, I think, my reading of PMLUD is that it basically drives toward a subdivision of the lot into quite small lots. I think it was, I want to say around five thousand square feet, that could be taken down to.
Thinking about residential only?
For the PMLD.
You are thinking about residential only?
Correct.
Well, this was a mixed-use development that was proposed.
On which property? A current proposal?
The, I'll point it out. This one here. I think there are three lots, if I recall properly. And one consideration of several was to put a mixed-use building in the front of each of the lots and then a residence at the back.
So how, what, help me understand, what is that other model for how the PMLD is being used in that case? So it has a mixed-use building? And then a separate building? Which is residential only in the back? And those buildings are sort of more sort of long bar buildings?
Oh, they were, well, it could be any number of things, but the thought that we saw was a proposal for some standalone housing. Three, I think it was three doubles, if I remember correctly. So I just don't, I just don't want the language to prohibit that possibility, if that's what the owner would like to do.
I don't think it would. I think that, as you mentioned, the language which we've added in, which is about multiple buildings on the same lot, would allow a similar result. In that it just, which may in fact be sort of what the PMLD is an opening to today. But I found it, to have a separate, kind of a nested set of separate requirements, which are under that PMLD moniker, I found it to be confusing and difficult to untangle how, if you move into that sort of special circumstance under the current zoning, how that works.
Understood, okay. I just understand my point.
Yeah, I mean...
I wanted to prevent it from, prevent the possibility from happening, that's all.
Yeah, so the PMLD allows you to share a common infrastructure, but then you create separate lots that could be sold off, you know, so it's in a way like a condo association, you know, but the lots are conveyed out separately if they want to. Or it could be held in common. The one that Walter's talking about is, is to be able to have residential unit by itself on the property separately, so. But that, in the PMLD case, it could be sold off, or it could be kept.
Yeah, let me, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Peter Chipman, 201 Main Street. Walter is mixing a couple of different things that have gone on, because we've tried to make some sense, some affordability, some opportunity to all these mixed bag of bad zoning over the years that hopefully is going to get resolved. One of the problems is this, is Walter is confusing the PMLD requirement with the ability to place other structures not on the front line. So what we have fully engineered, what we have fully proposed in the past, conceptually, not as a submittal, was to have some commercial on the main drag, a couple of units above, another three units in the back. Unfortunately, with best efforts made by Rich and Walter, and me behind the scenes, I guess, with town council, we were hoping for a hidden comer or something else that might have made it available, and it just didn't. So that was something I was hoping we were going to see, Rich, in some zoning change. These are turnkey zoning plans already fully engineered. You know, you have copies of them, okay? We have, we can fully build out 201 Main Street. And to be honest with you, some of the proposals are scaring the hell out of me. And I would be filing a plan to freeze zoning if these, some of these things are implemented. I have to be candid with you. My other alternative is a 40B. So I'm not a big fan.
Is there any aspect in particular you're talking about that scare you or you don't like?
I think minor changes, a couple of the main things that you haven't addressed that Rich knows, percentage to commercial to residential. Because if you were going to have this amazing amount of commercial and percentage, I did the quick math when I'm sitting at home, and it doesn't even seem like there's any relief given there, okay? More importantly is, what type of commercial are you going to put in there? Because every dime you put into it is going to lose money. Retail? Office? You tell me, I don't know. So that's the reality of how this side of the table is looking at it. No criticism to all your work, but you got to hear from our side. It doesn't make sense. I have fully build-out plans on a hundred thousand square feet there. You're aware of it, you're aware of it, Walter's aware of it. Minor changes. They don't exist here today. I apologize, I've never been to any one of your meetings, but I thought Rich would be hoisting that idea, that attitude. It's the reason why 194 Main Street ended up as a seventy-two-unit 40B filing. Because units not on the Main Street, you were getting four duplexes. Killed before birth. This is the reality of what is filling up the center of town. Not everybody wants to put in five hundred units, Peter, okay? There are alternatives to it that would make sense from a development standpoint, but you just can't get by that little yellow book or whatever the color is this month, because you can't get there from here.
Got you, thank you.
Just a couple of quick points and I'll get off, I'll get off the bobby horse here.
Before we, can I just address two, because I just want to be clear about two things. So in the current recommended zoning, there's two items which relate to those, the multiple buildings on an existing lot, or on the same lot. And the way it's phrased is that an additional building may be placed away from the lot frontage, creating clearly defined site circulation and building relationships through the layout of the buildings. Once the street frontage is fully occupied, we don't define what that is. That would be, so it does require a building be at the frontage of the site, but then, once that's satisfied, other buildings could be placed in other places on the site. So that's one, then the other on the...
Fully occupied.
So that, so fully would be, we should refine that language and discuss what it means. And then the other one, on the percentage of commercial to residential, right now, we have all of the allowed uses in the district in the statement that mixed use is required in the B1 district and shall include any of the allowed or special permit uses. Residential dwelling units shall not exceed seventy-five percent of the mix of uses of the total building area. Just inviting your reaction to that.
The reaction would be, I'm sorry, the reaction would be, it comes with this whole plethora of other requirements that you're moving in on us. And that's not real comforting to me. I mean, you want to build out the center of town? Talk to the people that own the stuff, okay? Lot of ivory tower stuff going on here. I don't know what you're going to put in. I asked you the question. And I apologize, Mr. Chairman. What type of commercial are you planning to make that construction cost after you make it through the very expensive planning board process? And then you get the joy of dealing with the building department? Where do I recapture those dollars? How do I recapture those dollars? Who are those tenants? I'm all ears.
I don't know if we clearly defined exactly what the, go ahead.
I say, I don't think we need to know who the tenants are. I think we're coming up with concepts here. We're not, we're not trying to lease property in this, in this meeting. So I don't think we care who the tenants are. I think we have surveys from the residents of what they would like. That would be our certainly objective, but we're not leasing right now, so.
But you're requiring fully occupied, sir.
Well, I don't know about words like that, but I think our mission here is to come up with a plan that could help achieve a vibrant downtown, not another residential zone downtown. If that's what I'm hearing, now, I clearly don't understand, I don't even know what PMLD is, but, in listening to, I don't think our intention is here is to turn the B1 zone into more residential zones. That's not what we heard from the residents of the town. I don't think that's what our mission is here. So I'm confused in listening to you. I'm not sure what we're talking about here. So if we set up, if we set up a groundwork that incentivizes businesses to come in, that's what our mission is here. Who comes in here? We don't know. We hope something that's desirable to the residents, but that's not our mission. Our mission here is to set up a floor plan that is, that will incentivize businesses to come in.
And then it won't be cost-effective, economically feasible to do so?
But I don't, we don't know that, you don't know that.
I do know that. I do know what residential, I do know what commercial, office space goes for. I do know what retail doesn't go for anymore. I absolutely do know that. And that's the reason why you have one of the two towns inside the 495 Belt with a direct line to downtown Boston that still has empty parcels in it. That's what I do know.
At its core, I think the charge of this committee and this whole project was to relax and encourage more economic development and growth in the Town Center District. So by working through some of the things that we heard from the community in those community feedback sessions, incorporating the survey information we had online, this is the recommendation that we're coming up with. Now, if you have different ideas or other input that we can use to help tighten that scope, please, share, open it up. I mean, that's what this whole thing is for, is be able to focus this in into something that we can all agree on together, which can help drive development and production in that area.
I guess I have a question, Mr. Chairman, of the chairman of the planning board. And that is, did you feel that that proposal with a minor change in zoning satisfies what we're basically talking about here tonight?
Well, the language that was described a moment ago that allows a second building on a lot after the first building is up near the front, I think is what we were looking for. I was surprised by the full occupancy words, frankly, but, but yes, Peter, that particular problem I thought was solved with the language that they recommended. Let me just hit a couple of other things and I'll surrender the microphone to someone else so I can get off here. Somewhere in the language that I read, it talks about the assumption that all new development in the center of town would tie into, to existing utilities or future utilities. I don't think it ought to be an assumption. I think it ought to be an explicit statement that says, you know, we expect development to tie into stormwater and if available, wastewater. Secondly, there's a number of prohibited uses, one of which is a gas station, just, but I think there ought to be a line in that it says any existing businesses that are, fall under the prohibited usage list will be grandfathered, just to make it clear.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Otherwise, you get some nervous shop owners around here that shouldn't have to be nervous. I presume community outreach is another topic that we're going to get to later, in which case I'll save my comments for that.
Can I ask one question? So I apologize, this has been addressed before. Is there a comparison between the density of 40B housing under the current zoning rules compared to the amount of housing that would be produced by new zoning laws?
The, you mentioned 40B, so by the 40B projects that are proposed?
Or, you know, so let's say everybody decides to develop their property with 40B under the current zoning laws at this point. What would the comparison be to that density? How many new homes would be produced versus?
Well, that's, it'd be easy enough to do a comparison of the 40B projects which have been proposed or been developed as concepts, to compare those numbers to these numbers. But it would be a separate exercise. It's basically kind of a maximum build exercise for a 40B project and I have not done that and didn't anticipate doing that. But it would be the total yield of housing units, if all, if all available parcels were to convert under 40B, the total yield of housing units would be much higher than the range which topped out at 500 of this recommended zoning.
Yes, I mean, I certainly understand that, but I think maybe having a specific number might
Well, we could do in a
Be an interesting comparison for some people.
So 10,000 gallons a day is kind of that, that benchmark that, you know, if you don't go above that from a wastewater flow, then
90, 90
We could, yeah, based upon the septic requirements and the proposals which we already have in hand, could basically kind of abstract and extrapolate a number which could give us a kind of a estimated total build under 40B, which could be useful.
It's a good point, though. I mean, you talk about what the threat looks like, you know, what we're actually working against as opposed to the theoretical. It makes sense to think about that.
Yes.
So just related to that, and I know Rich would have the numbers off the top of his head, the maximum number of residential units I thought you said was 515 if everything got built up mixed use in the area. Somewhere on page 46. So is 515, how far is this town actually behind? I know we're not at 5% yet.
10%.
Well, I know we got to get to 10%.
116 units.
That's all it is, is we're 116 units behind?
116 affordable units, though, not just
Well, and that's, that would be my comment, that every one of these residential units, because they're not, am I incorrect? I thought there would all be apartments by description. So do they all fall into 100% towards satisfying the equation?
So the companion to this would be the, so right now, we have inclusionary bylaw that 10 or more is the threshold. They have to have 10% affordable in there. So that, there's no proposed change to that. So under the present zoning, what gets built out of this?
Oh, but I, I thought apartments regardless went into the ratio
If it's 40B, if it's 40B
They have to be 40B apartments, not just apartments.
Correct.
Okay.
The whole unit goes in if, if a part of it is 40B. All the units count towards the number.
But a percentage of them have to be priced affordably.
Right, right. But they all count.
Yeah, if, if the percentage is correct.
The distinction for 40Bs, if a 40B is a rental, then all of the units will count towards the inventory. If a 40B is a condominium or ownership, then it will only be the ownership units that would count. There's no restriction as to whether the units produced under this zoning would be ownership or rental. So they could be condos or they could be apartment rentals. There's no language that defines that one way or another. But I did include a section which refers to and reiterates the inclusionary 10%, which the town already has because we think that would be an important aspect of both helping with the town's production of affordable housing, but also just a benefit to the town center in terms of diversity of residents. So we dove right into comments on the zoning recommended language. Do you want me to, I mean, do we just want to continue in this way where you all have questions if they're already in your mind or do you want me to walk through the zoning language kind of in more detail or what would be the best use from your perspectives of this time?
I think we have the two challenges. One is that you got to build out analysis, right, that you, that comes up with a very large number that, as we just talked about, which I think will be concerning to a lot of people. But at the same time, you know, we don't have, we don't have, we have a wastewater treatment plant that's capped out right now as far as the maximum flow. We're looking into additional sewer, but, so to kind of achieve that full build out, I think we need to get a sense on how realistic that is.
Right, and that's, that is the next aspect of our work, too, is the utility realities of the development. And knowing sort of that range, a potential expected development that might occur. Rich, I know that you know a lot of the details and I'll be working with you in terms of the current capacity and the amount of that capacity that's being used, potential for tying into it, but also then potential for expanding the system and options for that and what that might mean in future capacity. And so we'll, we'll be defining all of that sort of with a few very basic calculations, but then also writing that up in a narrative because there will, to achieve a certain scale of development in the town center, of course, there will be infrastructure investments which are required to unlock that development potential. And so this, the zoning is one aspect of it. And I think that the, it's, it's, I'm not sure what kind of phrase you want to use around it, but it's like a chicken and egg problem that the zoning, I mean, even if the infrastructure was there today, I think the zoning presents such limitations that you wouldn't get the development through your zoning. It would all be driven to 40B projects, even if there were infrastructure available, even if the town was fully sewered. So I think that the zoning, in terms of providing opportunities to add economic activity to the town center, which is the real core of this exercise, the zoning is a major constraint. I think there are other, if, if the development yields and the ranges that we're showing, and again, those are our ranges and should be thought of as a range, it's not the maximum number. If those are feeling too high, which you just said, Rich, then we should talk about the mechanisms like FAR and the parking requirements to potentially adjust those so that a maximum yield is potentially less than the numbers that we're expressing currently. So all these things, I think the, the nice thing about what we have set up right now in terms of modeling the district and understanding how the interplay of these characteristics work, are working together, is we can tweak some of those figures and numbers and kind of have all of those numbers flow back through again without much effort. So I could prepare even a summary table of, say, if you had parking at this rate per unit. Right now, it's set at one space per unit, which also might be too low in terms of the comfort level of the town. So we could change that to 1.25 or 1.5 and see how that then flows out in terms of those unit yields. Similarly, I think the other characteristic to explore would be the floor area, floor area ratio, which we were talking about. And if you adjust that up or down, then that unit yield would, that range would also adjust as well. So we could play with some of those figures and provide back a summary table to the town in short order to see, you know, if there's a feeling, a better feeling towards a certain range in combination of those characteristics than where it is currently.
But Josh, let's, let me jump in there real quick. Rich said there were, there are people that will object to that number. There are people that will object to even a lower number, right? So, I mean, let's take that into consideration as well.
It's true.
But another important fact for this conversation, I think, is, you know, you're, you're talking about a max build out, but what do you, that's a number that looks impressive when you first see it, but what's the build out time for that max build out? I mean, it's got to be 20, 30, 40 years for a max build out, right? And we're not talking about five or 10 years for a max build out scenario.
No, I think that's true and it won't, will not all happen at the same time either. And it, in, in the case of the parcels which we've identified in that diagram as yellow parcels, those, those are which are a little longer term in nature, they will in fact depend on the successful redevelopment of those other parcels to actually be unlocked as opportunities because they need the rent and land value conditions to be a little bit different than they are today to carry redevelopment of a parcel which is pretty closely built out today, for example, those, the two right at the center of town by the commuter rail stop. So those, those are effectively not short-term changes. Those are really long-term changes.
But you're right, there's got to be enough incentive to bring change there or it'll never happen.
So the one thing we did talk about, and I think Peter mentioned that we, the PMLD I don't see was of, to remove it as a recommendation because it didn't provide the value, or at least the intended outcome that people were hoping for. Is that, Peter, would you agree with that assumption about the PMLD?
Play multi-lot development, I mean, it was a creature that was created 25 years ago in zoning which never obviously was adopted or utilized by anybody and the town was a hell of a lot more empty at that time. So realistically, from a housing and retail of our mixed use, I didn't propose anything on a PMLD. I proposed in my regular
Please use microphones.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I don't think as a zoning creature, that has any value. I mean, it was a way to bury some pieces, I guess, or, you know, pie in the sky planning that whoever did this prior to the downtown development committee 10 years ago. So, but no one's ever utilized it. They had to back into it over here at the Stop and Shop. I don't know if any of you were on the boards then, I was. And that gave them the flexibility to play with it. But other than that, I think Build Your River's Edge might be a PMLD as well. Short of that, I don't know of any that have ever been utilized in that. It's, the creature in itself, I don't think has any value in the zoning. So.
So the, the other point you made was about the density, right? So the 75% is not, it's too low of a ratio?
25, 75?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a disadvantage because it probably comes with a whole lot of other caveats that I'm not sure I could live with. I did come up here after you talked about parking in the back. That means there's no side yard parking any longer?
No, you'd be, you should be able to park on the side in the rear, so.
You better tell Eastern Development because they think that they can park on the side of that supermarket someday, too.
Well, I think we'll need to make accommodations for parking on the side in the rear within the bylaw.
See, if you bring this whole package forward, that, that scares me. Individually, you start parceling, parsing them out. I'm sure there are a lot of fine ideas to it, but not as a wholesale change. Again, there's alternative ways to do this and it doesn't have to be done with a massive, matter of fact, my experience with zoning at town meetings is the more involved, the less of a chance.
So we actually haven't got to the point of discussing whether things will be one whole, you know, one wholesale change or to bring pieces to it, too. So we need to have that discussion as well.
Rich, as we said before, and we've discussed this on a dozen different plans already, if you can't incent them to take the loss on the commercial, and they will in fact take a loss on the commercial, any developer will, you got to find a way to make it worthwhile. That's all. It's pure economics, nothing more. So the alternative is to get a bad project that anybody has a right to do. 2020 is around the corner. Even if we have a number, even if L puts up 72 units, we're only at 8%. And I don't know anyone else doing, you know, rental 40Bs right now. That's the only other way we can get over the top. And this clock is reset after 2020, once the census numbers come out. You know that. So we're not, this isn't a threat. It's not an ideal situation. I could have filed that thing 10 years ago. I chose not to. I live here. I still live here. I don't want to see apartments four stories high, but I'm not going to build at a loss either.
Peter, what, I guess what's inhibiting your development, the 25, 75?
I think the inability to basically put some residential units up that. We, we propose six mixed-use buildings across the front, right across from boards, Old Offland, post office, couple of markets above, but in order to make it worthwhile, we're going to put three small condos on each one of the lots in the back to alleviate the overwhelming cost and ultimate loss of the commercial. That's, it was an easy fix. We went to town council, but it never got forwarded here. It got mashed up with a whole bunch of other ideas. That could be refiled tomorrow. The works are done, the plans are done, the set things laid out, the buildings are, the concepts are there. A simple zoning change. We've got 15 residential units and a whole bunch of storefronts. I thought that's what you guys wanted. You just can't put the stuff in the back that makes it worthwhile to do. That's all.
So right now, the way the bylaw is written, you have to go for a special permit to set the building back further than the build, the build to line right now. That was the, one of the issues with that particular requirement right now in the bylaw because it requires it to be done in conjunction with a site plan approval. So they're married together, those two requirements. You can't
Currently.
You can't go for a special permit without the site plan right now, the way the bylaw is written. So one of the things that, aside from what we just talked about, is in here, is relax, getting rid of that build to line as far as getting rid of that build-to line as far as building placement.
But you also have the caveat of fully occupied.
Well, it allows, yeah, it allows a second building to be placed out of that build-to line if a first building is placed there. And I agree that the fully occupied language could be relaxed.
Removed.
But I do think that a building at that line is important for the walkability of the district.
It can be done. It's just gotta make it worthwhile to put it there, especially if you want the commercial there.
Is there, in your experience, is there a ratio that's preferred in terms of that residential to other uses besides 75 to 25?
I'd be thrilled with Rich's other successful foray in deadem of 90-10. Didn't you do that, Rich, in deadem?
Of what? Can you remember that, sorry?
Ninety percent residential, 10% commercial.
And so we can run the numbers on those two, those ratios, and put those into the, that build-out analysis and see how that, how that looks in terms of the adjusted yield of square feet of commercial and residential units as well, and just see how that works on a district basis. But I think that's, that's.
I think I know where you were going, going up with a higher height and trying to get to the three and four stories and things like that, but that isn't where people want to live here. They don't want to live on a third story or a fourth story in Norfolk Center. They want what Bisher's doing all over my former property at 106 Main Street, Paul Kelly's property, okay, or over at Cleveland Street. They want stand-alones. They're much more popular. They sell at a higher premium, and you probably can get some better tax dollars.
So next door is three-story, is the, and that's where we're headed with this work, not four-story.
Right.
And the idea was that give them more height with the roof in it. So it wasn't going to four-story, it's to stay within the three. You don't think three-story would work?
I mean, I wouldn't build it. Elevators are expensive, walk-ups don't work. This is Norfolk Center. It's not southeast, it's not, it's, it's, it's not the city.
But by that same token, just because it's allowed doesn't mean it needs to be built that way.
In order to get the economic opportunity, profitability to do the job, we need the units.
But I feel like, I'm, I feel like what I'm hearing is, is that we need to have a lot of units on site, but no one will build a lot of units on site.
Not up high, but as proposed, as I've proposed conceptually to Rich and Walter, and those aren't a lot of units. Those are mixed-use buildings with three stand-alones in the back.
But I mean, I don't, I would say that what you're proposing is acceptable within the suggested zoning changes. No?
Devils in the.
The way I read it, anyway.
Devils in the details. There's a lot of other, there's a lot, a lot of design things that also get in the way. I mean, I think that, I guess the, the point is, would you rather see six small commercial Main Street units across from the post office and 15 residential? Simple two-story buildings right across there in keeping of that transition?
Well, regardless of what I think.
Well, you're a planning board member, you'd be voting on it, so I do care what you think.
But I guess what I'm saying is, is that your proposal right there that you just mentioned is acceptable within the suggested zoning guidelines.
Or a minor change of zoning.
There's nothing here stopping you from doing that, right?
Or, or minor change in zoning of putting the units in the back. I can't put units in the back right now.
Now, but if this gets passed, you can.
Depending on what's coupled with it, yes.
So maybe it's time to start talking about what's coupled with it.
Right. And I think that the, the types of requirements that we're coupling with it, I, I don't believe are onerous, but are focusing the development investments to be consistent with the community vision that's both being expressed in the planning documents in the past 10 years and also more recently at the, through the community survey and community forums, which we've facilitated. And those are basically helping to make the designs more consistent with what's there today. I think that it's really not driving at anything different or a higher standard than what's there today, but really is focusing on making sure that that's, that's the standard that is continued and consistent with future investments. And so I don't think actually that's, I wouldn't consider that onerous or difficult for developments to achieve, but I would actually say that it's probably going to help them get a premium out of the product that you're producing. And so I think that it's not, it's not something that is difficult to achieve. I think properties that are there today have achieved it. So if we want to get into some of those details, we can flip to the section which is new for this evening, which is the design guidelines. They start on page 66. So this is, this would be intended to basically be a standalone design review guideline document, which is a companion to the zoning recommendations. The zoning recommendations would refer to this design review guideline document, and then it basically has an introduction and an outline in terms of its applicability and administration with the planning board and the design review board. And it would be intended to be used both by project proponents, so the development teams, the architects, the design teams of those owners, of the property owners, and then also by the planning board and design review board in the review of those projects. It includes adjusted, the top 10 design elements for successful contributions to Norfolk Center, which was adapted from the design review board's list that they had brainstormed. And then it goes, page 68 and 69, it includes effectively several images from Norfolk Town Center and talks about what we see in each of those images in terms of modest building height, which is well proportioned, modest building scale that's compatible with the town center, exterior materials, sloped roof pitches and roof forms, and then generous landscape and plantings. And then on the facing page, you can see other examples of designs which aren't achieving those things. And I think it's, it's actually a pretty stark contrast between what you already have in town center and what you could have if not providing extra guidance, I think. That the guidance is providing a safety net to the town in terms of the quality of project and product that you'll see. And then the, following from that, pages 70 through the end and page 75 are specific design guidelines regarding the building design, site frontage, building facade, site layout, landscape, and sign design. And I think that they are, the language is defined enough that they, the boards that are using them would be able to evaluate a project's compliance, and they're also specific enough that a design team on the developer's side of things could, I think, follow them in a pretty straightforward way and bring forward projects which are in compliance. They, in some cases, do have some specific items, and I actually put up a brief list here.
Josh, real quick, just page 69, probably gets, types of design features that are discouraged, I think you list features that are actually encouraged. Is this a full page of encouraged, or did we mismatch the?
Nah.
The second, the 69 is intended to be discouraged? It just didn't quite work out that way?
Yeah, no, it's, you're right. This should be clarified a little bit, so it's a little confusing. The, the statement in bold is actually desired, and then the description of the image is illustrating how that image is not actually achieving it.
Okay.
So that could, that could stand a little clarification. But it is, it's a little bit of a mixing of the two, of both encouraged and discouraged. The images reflect a less-than favorable outcome for new projects, I believe, in the context of Norfolk Center. Some of these images are from around the region, so I will not, you know, in the context of where they came from, they're probably fine. Might hear from one of the communities that I'm using them as a lesser good example. So the, the list that I put up on the screen, there is a gray area, I believe, between some of the information which is in this portion of the design guidelines, which are not, they're intended as guidance for both sides of the, both partners which are occurring through the development process in terms of the town and the development team, but they're not, the development team is not obligated to follow guidelines, so that they're, the town can pressure the developer to follow them, but they, they would be still in that area of guidance, which is an obligatory. Standards of which they are included in the zoning section itself, in which we do have a few, would be required and are clearly defined in the zoning and are either, are kind of on-off switches whether it being complied or not, and they would require variance if not being complied with. One of those is, for example, the multiple buildings on a lot. That could fall down to a guideline, for example, which might offer more flexibility in terms of how that's achieved. Or things like the pedestrian ways and street trees, which are currently, I believe, on the zoning, the zoning section I currently, could fall down to be a guideline and be a little more flexible in how they're achieved. Then we have some other things which are in both places, I believe, currently. So parking located behind buildings is addressed both in the guidelines and in the zoning language. It could be only addressed in the guidelines, which would make it more flexible. Then there are things which I believe are, are important, but they're only covered in the guidelines, one of which would be a way that we've measured existing buildings around in the district and found that they're all basically broken down into a 40-foot width bay. So not that, not that a building is only ever 40 feet wide, but that they're, the buildings are articulated in such a way that you read 40-foot bays on the front facade primarily. And so that could be elevated if, if it's thought to be most, more important to be a part of the zoning requirement. Right now, it's only in the guideline language, but I think that would be, I think that's a very strong guideline in terms of keeping the scale in line with what Norfolk Center is today. And then the, another example of that is the sloped roof pitch, which shows up both in the zoning language, but also then has more illustrative guidance about how it should be achieved in the guidelines. So the guidelines are really intended to offer both ideas and solutions for the types of requirements that we're asking for. And again, I don't think that they're, we're not asking for, in my experience, things that are out of bounds or unusual. These are pretty straightforward best practices in terms of how properties should be developed. One thing I don't address really in either place right now, and it's more of a question to the committee, is sustainable design, either in terms of building sustainability or site sustainability, low-impact development, those types of approaches. Both the zoning language and the guidelines are relatively silent on that right now, and that could be built in more actively and proactively. Some communities choose to do that, others don't. Again, that, that's an area where there could be cost premiums associated with it, or you might feel, get complaints from the development side of things about requiring certain sustainable practices.
I believe at the last town meeting, we voted to go to a, to be a green community.
Stretch code.
Yeah, so, it's an idea that has been supported in town, although there were developers that spoke out against it as well, so, dead on.
So that could be something that maybe, I, I think, given the context of where the region and the world more generally are in terms of sustainability, it would be reasonable for the guidelines at least to have some statements about sustainability included. And that way, it would be more flexible than, say, putting it into the zoning requirements. But I, I do, I thought, having looked, reviewed this information prior to the meeting, tried to look at it with a little bit of fresh eyes, that was one of the things, standout items to me that are not.
Boyd's Crossing, you know, went in that direction, so.
And I, I'd be concerned about going green because I think that means something different to everybody. And maybe things like percentages, you know, percentages of certain, of sustainable materials in building as a way, and maybe that even moves over time. But I would be really concerned about how that's defined because I guess that it means a different thing to everybody. You know, you could be talking gigantic monies if you're really talking a pure sustainable building. So as I say, you really have to be clear on what that means because you'll scare the hell out of everybody.
There are people that will disagree with sustainability costing a lot of money, but I do agree with you, that is an education point that is important. If that's something we want to stand behind, it's certainly an education point that needs to be.
Be really clear what that means, yeah.
But again, you know, Boyd's, Boyd's Crossing found it worth investing in. It seems to be working for them because they're selling just fine, so.
Yeah, yeah. Even things like locations of solar panels, for example, and, you know, anything like that should be defined in, in standard guidelines. They should be encouraged, but where, where do you put them? You know, you're not gonna put them on the front of your building maybe, but, so I, I think, because that's probably the most common thing that people might talk about is, is solar panels.
Yeah, are we talking about also sustainability as far as the site design goes as well? Because there's like, there's different aspects of site. I mean, I think we are talking about something like stormwater being.
But I don't, I don't think we'd go down the road of making our own sustainability rules. I think we, I'm speaking out loud freely here, but, and I think we'd go with an established lead system or, you know, if there's any three or four different well, well-fit, you know, there's, there's any number of systems out there now that we could recommend any one of them be followed. Or you could just say, build sustainably and responsible as a guideline.
Yeah, it could be something.
Let the people define it how they want, without putting any strict.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head right there. I mean, the, the charge that we have is to encourage development and growth in a certain way that we find acceptable, or what the people have told us that they find acceptable for town center. I'd be weary about putting restrictions attached to it at this point. I mean, we passed a pretty strict stretch code that covers, I think, a lot of the concerns that people had with the way that we were building. I don't know if we want to introduce another component of that now on top of all these other things that we're trying to push through, at least from my perspective.
I, I agree with that. Maybe encourage, you know, low-impact design, but I think to limit it would be.
Yep. The stretch code gets to a lot of the requirements of the different sustainability measurements.
Yep.
The things that are left are really the things that the developers themselves are gonna decide whether they're important or not.
So from my perspective, the design guidelines as a whole, they addressed three kind of core items for us. The first one was the concerns of the community. When we got feedback, people were very adamant about things they wanted, but also very adamant about things they didn't want. And I think we incorporated a lot of that in here to reassure them that things were not gonna go down a path that was acceptable to. that things were not going to go down a path that wasn't acceptable, didn't fit in with what we were doing. The second was to not necessarily put in requirements for people to follow, but more streamline this process, so developers have an idea of what's coming down the pike, so that they don't have to go through a seven-month back-and-forth process with an approving board. They come in knowing what is the expectation, and hopefully that streamlines that, that streamlines that process. And the third thing, Walter, I mean, I know that part of the affordable housing and the plan that we put together, one of the charges from that plan was to put together a design guideline for the B-one district, and I think this addresses that. I don't know if it was intended to or not, but this, this fulfills that, absolutely.
But the design guidelines are, are just a recommendation, right? So, I think we have to be careful that whatever's in the, if, if something was not followed in the design guidelines, would we be upset? And if we would be upset, it should be in the zoning law.
Correct, yes, and that's sort of what this list gets at, too, is that if it's important enough that you would want it to be followed under all circumstances, then that should probably be, make its way into the zoning line.
Yes, can't leave it to chance.
Well, you're not really leaving it to chance, though, because there is approving boards that are charged with reviewing and approving the plans that are submitted. And I think there needs to be a certain level that we give those boards who are charged with that to be able to make that determination.
But then you're coming up with the arbitrariness again, that you just spoke about.
That's a good point. But it's not necessarily arbitrary, it's, you could say it's a negotiation tool, right? You could say, look, this project is great, it has five great things and five things that maybe don't quite fit into our guidelines, you know? If you could, if we could encourage you to incorporate another two or three of the things in the guidelines, then maybe we'd be willing to accept two or three of the things you're proposing that don't necessarily fit in the guideline.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, my impression of the two, and how I, I feel like they're working, and I hope that, intend that they would actually work, is that the zoning recommendations are a bit of a loosening from what is there today, because it's clearing out a lot of those density restrictions primarily. And then the addition of the guidelines, since you're loosening on the zoning side of things, you're improving the flexibility, the ability for a developer to actually make the property work. And then the guidelines come in and add that level, the expectations that are there about the quality and the types of contributions that an investment in a property is going to make to the town center. And I think that flexibility then plays out. The expectations are clear, but then the flexibility can play out through the review process to make sure that the property, the project can actually proceed. So, I think it's a, hopefully, a nice balance of inviting more opportunities to actually occur while providing protections to what the community wants to see for their vision. So, that is what I hope is coming through in all of this. And I, and I also hope that, although there's a lot of information here, I do think it's a simplification and a streamlining of the regulations from where they were. I think that the, the zoning recommendations are much more straightforward as they are laid out in the recommended language than they were in the, or in the current language. But again, this is also the first.
Iteration.
The first draft of them, and we're, this is not a done project by any means. And we're inviting the committee's review of this document, and we invite you to review beyond this evening and get us more comments and detailed comments. And then we're, we will be inviting, and Rich and I are talking about the community outreach that needs to occur between now and that September warrant deadline, about how do we get, so if this is draft one, perhaps after receiving your comments and refining this and making it better, we have a second draft, which is a more public version of the draft, which then we can decide how to invite additional community comment on it and refine it and strengthen it even more from where it is from that point.
From that point, Josh, do we have the means to have another one of the town meetings that we, that you posted for us?
I believe we do. I, I checked our budget a week or two ago, but not right before I left the office today. And I do think, we hadn't scoped another one, but I do think that we're doing fine on the budget. And if we, if that's desired, we could certainly do that. I think also, you know, given the discussion that we've had, we've had this evening, another potential very productive use of our time would be maybe having a meeting with business and property owners, and kind of talking with them about the details of this and seeing, getting the reaction that they may have, that would be useful.
I'd like to comment on that. I think that in some cases, you may have to go to them, as opposed to ask them to come here, particularly in the green areas where the development is likely. You know, they're just green grass right at the moment, but you may have to go out and find them and, and sit down in their office, as opposed to having them come here.
Are there sign guidelines in the town?
There are.
Sign designs?
Several versions.
They're not.
They need to be updated, but I don't, I think that's a little bit outside of the goals of this district. But I, they're mentioned in the design guidelines I saw there, I didn't read through, but.
I think they're an important part of, if, if you have design guidelines for building fronts, and you put, somebody puts a neon sign up, you know?
Yeah, the, the approach I took to signage in this document was effectively to put in language that makes sure that the signage is compatible with the building design and the site design, but not necessarily try to supersede or reinterpret the sign type language that's in other parts of the ordinances. So, this would, this is a very sort of light touch to give enough, I think, guidance to make sure that a design of, that the signage is a full package with the other parts of the design. And that, and if it wasn't, or something really stood out, then the review boards would have enough language here to then push back on that.
So, the sign language right now, you don't have to worry about neon, it's. The sign, the sign guidelines is, the sign bylaws to get it to be more effective signs for businesses, not necessarily guarding against, you know, neon, I mean, it's very.
What, size and materials, is that all in there?
Yes, yeah. But lighting is a big, I mean.
Lighting, yeah.
We've toyed with the idea of the design review board of, of making some recommendations on that language, because it exists in two different places, too, so. We need to, we need to figure out, charge somebody with that exercise, I think. My guess is it's going to end up being the design review board to start the process, and then go through the planning board. But anyway, again, I think that's outside of this study. I, I do have a couple random comments, Josh, others which I will send. But one thing that came to mind, I, I've seen a diagram where we had a walk radius for the center of town, I think we should add bike radius to that. I think it's becoming more and more important. Also, one of my general comments is, is, well, first of all, I think it's a fantastic document you put together. I think it speaks volumes for the effort that a lot of people put into this. And I, and I, I hope we can keep going forward with it. One general, I don't want to call it a criticism comment, is it's, I think maybe, as we wrap it up here, we might benefit from a little bit of more forward thinking, like, not just planning for now, but planning for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. You mentioned lead sustainability already, which is something I had written down. I know it's hard to do, but the concept of car sharing and parking, you know, I don't know. We obviously have a, a MBTA station here in town, so it's going to be, you know, what is the future of parking? I, I don't know, but do we want to contemplate it? I mentioned the bikes, and then we, we kind of contemplate. I know it's not a very big B-one district, but maybe, speaking to some of what Peter was saying, maybe we need like a, maybe we need to separate it out where there's a denser district in the middle and maybe the outer sides, or maybe a little, maybe that's the compromise between the full build-out mode and the, and the lesser build-out mode. Maybe we have a high-density core that's surrounded by a lower-density ring, I guess. Again, we don't have a lot of land to do that with, but again, these are just random thoughts that came to me while I was reading through it. Picking up on one thing, I, I think Rich was getting at with the, the larger fit-out. I, I think it would be beneficial for us, after this is done, to do a traffic analysis on whatever the large fit-out is, so that we have that in our back pockets in town, so that when people start complaining about traffic, we can say, look, here, these are the numbers. We don't have to imagine it, this is what, this is what it would be.
That's a.
Those are some of my random thoughts.
Yeah, maybe at a high level, because that's such a, I know Peter mentioned it last meeting, but traffic is, at a zoning level, is a lot more challenging to try to do a traffic analysis versus project-based, so we could.
But you're, but you're a hundred percent correct. There are going to be people objecting to the full build-out numbers.
No.
And it's going to be hard to defend them without, without something behind us saying that there's, you know, it's not going to be New York City, or it is, maybe it will be, I don't know.
One of the things that we asked Josh about before he had gotten here was to break out the build-out numbers by the designation of site readiness. So, we had the three colors for yellow, green, and red. And to break those out, so we could expect, all right, this is more short-term, more within reach, whereas this is more farther down the road. And I think that'll be able to give a little more perspective to the timing that you talked about there.
And we also had, one of the recommendations I had put forward was removing the distinction between a sort of a core B-one and an outer B-one, and just having it be a flat B-one. But I, in the conversation we're having this evening, another approach to sort of providing a little variation in the opportunities for parcels, given where they're located or their scale, we could, you could set up a situation in the proposed zoning where you have certain incentive mechanisms, where a top-tier project that's doing all the things right for the town center gets a bonus of a certain, you know, extra granted number of units, or an extra half-floor, or extra floor, or, you know, figure out a way that's, that's balanced for what the town wants to see, but that if, if a property owner wants to really achieve that, they need that next bump of fifteen units to make it work, or whatever it is, then you have certain requirements that they need to meet to then get that incentive. So, that would be another approach.
But they don't have to do it, they can still go build it a lower, yeah.
Built into the zone, and that could apply anywhere in the zone, it wouldn't necessarily. And that would maybe give you the opportunity to have certain parcels become built out in a denser way, as opposed to saying, this inner, this inner group of parcels.
You could create an incentive zone.
Yeah, or, or, yes, you could have a.
Instead of a B-one and a B-one A, or whatever.
A geographically-defined incentive zone would be another, might be too complicated, but.
Just trying to make your life complicated.
But that, but that sort of incentive zoning is well-tested and available as an option.
I think it's great, because I think it's a very collaborative way to incentivize development. Sounds like a very collaborative way to incentivize development.
Rich, with the, I'm still thinking about what Peter was talking about with the, you know, the seventy-five percent residential versus twenty-five percent commercial. Just wondering if there's any other possible, you know, different ways, you know, that, if you've ever seen that, you know, in other communities that you've worked in, you know, maybe phrase it another way that still encourages the commercial development, while also encouraging, you know, development to get to the point where, you know, you can really start to have, you know, more of the commercial, you know? Where you need, I, I imagine you, you need the residential to start to, you know, build up the commercial, where, you know, I think, Peter, you said, you know, the ninety and ten, you know, if there's any way to.
Yeah, so what Peter was talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, the, the seventy-five, twenty-five is really related to the resident, the, where the sixty-five, you know, the residential's.
Sixty-five, thirty-five, two-thirds, one-third.
Right, so right now, it's sixty-five, thirty-five. You're talking about the seventy-five, seventy-five, twenty-five.
I believe that's in your recommendation.
Not mine.
Right, we, current, I believe, is sixty-five, thirty-five. And then I've proposed seventy-five, twenty-five.
That's, right, that's what I heard out of him. I just threw out a different example.
So, the. So, it would be, so our, our recommendations would be an improvement on the current in terms of, if, if improvement, you think of residential units are the financial drivers which are allowing the commercial space to exist.
Taken in its very narrow interpretation with all the other baggage, that's what concerns me again.
But again, if you added the layer of incentivized zoning on it, you could say, all right, we're going ninety, ten, and if you provide seventy-five, twenty-five, then you can put an extra floor under building.
Those two different pieces, let me just hold on, so, so there's, the ninety, ten we were talking about earlier, that was in a, a single building, which is, you know, a mixed, a mixed-use building, ninety, ten. There's that piece, what's in here, which doesn't, I'm reading back, you don't have a ratio in here right now.
It's right at the.
In here, when it's mixed-use?
Yeah, it's at the front end of the allowed uses.
Okay.
While you're looking at that, the, the point I'm trying to get across is, correct me if I'm wrong, but we all want to create some type of streetscape look of commercial, small mercantile-type operation along the main street, which is fronted on the main street. I mean, that's the, that's the goal of that. The depth of those shops, offices, whatever is going to go in there, I don't think should be the driver. If you got your frontage and your cute little main street, literally, what difference is what's behind it and above it, within design review concerns, of course, okay? But that's what your, your goal is. I don't think you should care if you're using forty-foot widths times twenty, and you only get a seven-hundred, eight-hundred usable floor space, okay? Versus rolling out thirty-five percent of it, that's where it gets uneconomic. You still get what you're looking for, and what I'm looking for, too. Nice-looking main street, pretty face, but allowing the rest of the design to pay for it. Do you really care if it's fifty feet deep versus twenty feet deep?
Again, I think, I'm correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but I think your recommendations remove a lot of those numbers from.
They do, but we still have a seventy-five percent mix of uses, so.
But that's a ratio of mix of use, it doesn't, there's really no prescriptive language when you're saying that your, your retail has to be fifty, sixty, seventy feet deep.
You're in the confusion part, and pardon my ignorance on it, because it's the first time I ever came across it, because this isn't my world, which was floor-area ratio. I wasn't clear on how that factored in.
That's the overall, so that's, that's the overall building measure. And then we have other language which describes, it's basically a limitation on the total residential dwelling units. So, we say, of that total area, so it's basically the, the ratio we're proposing for floor-area ratio is point-six. So, you get your lot area times point-six, the maximum amount of building area that you can build. Then, of that total building area, we're saying a maximum of seventy-five percent of it can be residential. The other twenty-five percent, we don't actually specify. We just say it can be any allowed or special permit use. So, it can be any of these uses which are listed here.
And here's the clarification I need, is when you say an FAR of point-six, so you have a ten-thousand-square-foot lot for demonstrative purposes, so you can only build on six-thousand feet? Would that include all hardscape, including parking lot, everything else?
No, that's six-thousand square feet of building.
Just building.
Of building, yeah.
Okay, that clarifies one.
Yeah, and then, and then you'd get seventy-five percent of that six-thousand.
But we're getting so caught up in different percentages, I, I just, what you have to understand is, it's, it's not stubbornness, it's not trying to maximize every dime or anything else, but you guys want a streetscape. I'm trying to. I'm trying to voice the idea of how you could get a streetscape and still let the person afford to put it up. That's, and if we have to rent it cheap, we rent it cheap because we made it on the other end. That is the reality of any mixed use building, I think, out in the 495 belt. We're not Concord, okay? We're not some other town. I happen to be in Concord today, so I'm sure they get pricey rents. We're not there, because none of these places have been built or filled.
And the type of tenants you would want to try to get, couldn't afford expensive rents either necessarily, per se.
Home-based businesses and Amazon took care of them.
Right.
The FAR, the FAR .6, to continue with Peter's example, 10,000 square foot lot, 6,000 square foot footprint of the building, right?
Yes.
And then, and then multiple stories, is that, is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
That's total building area.
Oh, that's total building. So if you have a three-story building, you've only got a 2,000 square foot footprint?
Right.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, you wouldn't have a 10,000 square foot lot to begin with, so...
Some of the lots are small, we just went through there.
But that's what, but that's what his build out analysis begins to explain, right? So with that floor area ratio, you know, his, that, this max build out ratio that they've outlined here includes that .6 FAR, right? And we're still getting to an additional 515, you know, residential units. So it might sound like a restrictive number.
It is.
Well, it's less restrictive than our guidelines are now.
That may be, but it is.
Yeah, I, I hear the point about it perhaps not being the most direct metric, though, to measure. If you do want active storefronts on the ground floor, there are other ways to measure that. And so we could explore what that is, a percentage of frontage that's occupied by active storefronts, and, you know, I think there was some language like that in the current zoning about a percentage of transparent glazing, but it was more about...
Not true. And the design guidelines lead the horse to water. Again, they're not requirements, but...
This isn't a truly commercial redevelopment, though, or de-development, okay? We're not holding 40 acres up in Worcester waiting for Sam's Club or Walmart to come in. And that was a project that I did, okay? We rehabilitated WR Gray's site up on Woburn, all right? That was all driven by commercial tenants before the shovels goes in the ground. That isn't here. I understand that that's how a lot of the world thinks, that, okay, we've got thread needles, yarns and threads coming in. I can afford to build this building now, thank God, all right? That's not what's driving this. It's a cost loss, it's not a cost add. So if we can provide something for you, or for me, because we all live here, and make it look good, and still be able to build it out in a way that, just don't force feed the commercial, because it's not, if it worked, would be built. Doesn't work.
Yeah, I think early on in our meetings, one of the first things we addressed was, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? The commercial or the residential to drive the commercial? And I think we all agree that the residential and the foot traffic is what was necessary to be able to drive in the types of commercial that we want to see, that the people wanted to see, and they told us they wanted to see. So I get what Peter's saying, that that's got to be the primary driver for what we're trying to do here. I, I just don't know if this is necessarily the path to get there. And if that's what you're saying, then that's what you're saying. And if that's, this plan kind of gears us towards that, and it just requires tweaks or whatnot, but...
Well, it certainly argues for removing the full occupancy wording, because if you, if you want commercial businesses to fill up the commercial properties, you've got to have the residents in place to do it.
I would, I would agree with that.
But there's nothing requiring you to have multiple buildings, do you think?
No, but if you do, I mean...
Is there any way to leave some discretion to the planning board, to be able to make it, you know, a decision based off, you know, not every site's the same, every lot in Norfolk's a little bit different, different circumstances.
But an applicant could, in theory, apply for a special permit for, say, the language stays that, for full occupancy. A developer could, I'm conjecturing here a little bit, but a developer could come into the town and sit to the planning board with special permit application and say, look, I can't occupy my commercial building, I need to build residences behind it to support the lower rent in the, in the commercial building. That's under a special permit purview. And that could be granted, the residence could be built, on the condition that the rents being charged in the commercial are lower, to, you know, to support, to, to support commercial business coming into that place that couldn't rent at a higher rate, right? So, I mean, the vehicle's there, it's certainly not easy, I would think.
What would stop a developer from just putting an office in there, charging a dollar a year?
What would stop it? I'm, I'm sorry.
Your required full occupancy.
I don't know.
Nothing, why would we care?
As long as it's you, that's not what we're looking for, really. I mean, that's not the desired use.
No, it's not. But still, commercial.
The point being is, I don't think you can force the commercial, full occupancy rule is a bad one.
I, I think that's a good point, is, you know, people are going to find essentially the loophole in the, you know, the bylaw to, you know, you want full occupancy, you get someone to pay a dollar.
Right, but there's other options on full occupancy too, like, there's the vacancy tax option.
Yeah. You could do with that one. My concern would be is if you don't, if you don't build the, the commercial space, it's never going to happen. So that's kind of the chicken and egg, too. If you don't ever build it, it can't happen.
And I think that's what, that's what we're really trying to protect against.
That's what I would be afraid of.
Not, we don't want zoning to result in a town center of resident, residential-only projects.
Right.
Because I think that's a real loss to the town. And, and I will clarify, I use the phrase fully occupied, but not in the way that it's been interpreted and used in this conversation. The intention was that the building, or the, the lot frontage would be fully occupied by a building, but not that a tenanted space would be fully occupied.
Certainly wasn't clear.
Yeah, and so I totally agree, this language should be changed and clarified.
It was, it was a proposal at one point spoken about, I think to you, Rich, by the building commissioner, of requiring no, no allowance into the residential units until the retail or mixed use commercial was filled. Wasn't that proposed by Bullock at one point to you? You did mention that at one point, which was just crazy. And that, that's what we were worried about, that's what we think that you were going at, at least I was. I'm sorry if anyone else was lost, so...
No, I don't, I, I think that it's difficult to sort of pin phase development on occupancy of tenants, but I do think that it is, what we are going for is that it's important to actually build out those spaces. How, whatever, how, whatever recipe for requiring those spaces we come up with, it's important that it be mixed space, not all residential, to some proportion. And I think that, but then if that mixed space sits vacant, and then the, everyone needs to work together to figure out how that space can be used appropriately, then that's another, that's another problem to solve, but that some space should be built.
So when you say built out, you mean just constructed? In my world, and probably Aaron's world, built out means very different. I mean, you do a build out of a space. You just mean the shell constructed?
Constructed, yes. The building itself, without a tenant fit out, unless the tenant is there.
But again, that gets to your point, Peter, which is, is that if you build the space up front, it allows you to build the, whatever you build behind, to fund or to...
Offset.
Yeah, offset, there's another word I'm looking for, it wasn't quite offset, to subsidize...
Better word.
The, the space that's not renting up front, right? So, I mean, again, I think all of those things are there. I'm glad you clarified the full occupancy thing. I, I wasn't going to comment on it, because I didn't understand it either, but...
Yeah, no, there wasn't, there was no intent to have, as a zoning guy, I take it very seriously. I, I get, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, we will use a different, I under, totally understand the misunderstanding, the, it's a bad phrase, but we've, yes.
But it was kicked around once, well, well before you ever came in.
Okay. Well, then that, that makes it even easier to misunderstand. So, yeah, it was just basically saying that...
The building's got to be there.
Some percentage of the street frontage should be occupied by building before another building somewhere else should be contemplated. And so it would be determined by the reviewing boards whether or not, like, you don't want a developer to say, well, I put the dumpster enclosure up on the street frontage, so then I'm allowed to put my building in the back, because I've put, I've occupied the frontage. So that, there just needs to be some guidance around what, what is acceptable in terms of occupying the frontage. So that's what I was getting at with that phrase. But I will find new language for that. The other thing I think that I wanted to get at is the, whether or not the tenant, whether or not these spaces that get built as shells, and if they have a tenant or not, or how they get fit out, I think there is, in addition to this zoning work, probably the need to discuss, as a town, an additional town center sort of stewardship mechanism, like a business improvement district is a good example of that, in which, the way that's structured is that property owners in the town center form a business improvement district, pay into, they decide at what rate they will tax themselves, they pay into a business improvement district, then that district is a self-managed operation which helps to recruit tenants and businesses, mom and pop shops, whatever they are, to help fill these spaces which are being created by the development community. So I think that makes it more of a collaborative environment. It, it puts a, another stewardship entity which is operating at a more detailed level than the town is able to, and it's also a shared resource that puts less of the pressure on individual property owners. And then that can also be used to do things like help with events, help with maintenance of landscape, or snow removal, whatever it may be, to help supplement town services. And they've been used to great success in places like Amherst, and downtown Crossing, and North Hampton, I think, has one.
It's much more, much more proactive than a vacancy tax.
Yes. So, and that would be, so I think, and that, that's in the very skeletal rear part of our report, where we talk about other supporting recommendations, and we do talk about town center management options. A main street organization would be another similar approach to a bid. But I think that, that's a part of this broader conversation about creating spaces which need to be filled by something, and those spaces, we shouldn't just be forcing people to build spaces that we don't feel are going to be filled, and there needs to be other, another, other organizations which are helping that to happen. So that's a part of the recommendations as well.
You see that the existing 65-35 completely arbitrary, and never even realized, despite them stamping in as law, it's, didn't work.
Yeah.
And it's failed. You need to do something about it, and if there's a way to get to what you want, or a part of it, which is the streetscape, we need to change the percentages.
Understood.
I have a question, there's specific language in here that talks about assisted living facilities, in the design guidelines, and it exempts, it says exempts, I'm just wondering, why so specific, that terminology of assisted living?
Do you know where, what?
It was like page 19 or 20? I was just surprised to see something so specific of assisted living facilities.
Pre-existing in the old zoning, maybe that's what you picked it up from.
I think that's what it is, yeah.
It seems like things like that are probably in the current language.
Yeah.
If it's in that section, it's, this is why I find this part of the way we've laid this out to be a little confusing, because if you don't pay really close attention, it's hard, it's easy to mix up the current versus the proposed.
At the top of page 18, under the, it's under current, yeah.
Yeah, it's under the current, which they've rewritten to take that out.
Yeah, but I was just surprised to see something so specific of that strange thing, assisted living facilities, like, what was the plan here, you know?
Yeah, the current, the current zoning does have quite...
That's why we're changing it.
Yeah, very specific items.
It used to be listed as assisted living facilities at elevation 176, within the B1, so that isn't spot zoning, what it is.
Right. So we have, we have tried to, I would say, generalize more the zoning language from where it was, and just, I think, improve its clarity and flexibility. I think it's the basic, been the basic approach.
Well, that raises a question, it, do we exclude, I think we spoke about this at one of our very earliest meetings, do we exclude anything? Do we, do we, would we exclude an assisted living facility, for example?
There's a list of non-allowed uses.
Yeah, there are, there is the list of, the uses I didn't speak to very much, actually, but the uses we did not, I think, take thematic shifts from what the current allowed or special permit or prohibited uses are. I will say that the, the one, the changes that I did make were more focused on the types of automobile centric uses, like a gas station, which was mentioned earlier in this meeting, which exists today and would be grandfathered, those existing uses would be grandfathered, but I don't think are consistent at all, if a new gas station were to come in on a, on a property as a redevelopment proper, or as a developed, newly developed property, I don't think that that would be a consist, a use consistent with the future vision of what the district is.
Right.
So we've moved that to a prohibited use. So it would basically mean no new gas stations. The current gas stations would, would be fine, and could continue to operate and improve themselves, and we would make that clarification, as suggested, that current uses would be grandfathered right at the top of that column. The other, Rich and I actually talked about this and went back and forth a little bit, but I had done the same thing to drive-throughs, but now have moved drive-throughs back into, I believe, special permit, because there are, I mean, the, the new proposal next door has a drive-through, but it's on the rear of the building and is hardly discernible from the street frontage. And so that's, I think, a good example of how that could be accommodated without detriment to the walkable district. So we moved that back, back forward, or back to the allowed side of the uses.
All right, so what's next?
So I think tonight, we should probably decide on a, a next committee meeting, and then if we, if it is desired to hold another community meeting, then we probably want to start targeting some dates for that.
Well, I'll, I'll argue that we need to, the community outreach is still up here. I mean, I, I think we need to get out in front of this as soon as we can, if we're planning to take it to town meeting, because if we show up with this at town meeting, we're going to get our heads cut off. So you gotta, we gotta get out in front of it. I personally think the meeting you ran was a great way to do it, one, because you're sort of an impartial advisor, and two, because your interface, I thought, was fantastic. So I, I, I think that would be a great way to do it. Hopefully, we can find a way to get better attendance than we got on the first one. I, I think having a document to speak to rather than, than saying, come with your thoughts, you'll get a better attendance. I also think we can probably promote it better in the town. So I think that would be a great way to start this education process, I'll call it, for the, for the zone, the proposed zoning changes. But again, that's just my opinion, so... But I think we need to, we need to figure out a way to do other things, like, I think we, we need to figure out how to do something like we did with complete streets at the library, right? Where we had, you know, a poster on the wall that people could write on. I don't, I don't, I don't, we can't post this on the wall and have people write on it, but we'll have to give that a thought, right? Maybe we need to have a meeting at the library where we'll allow people, you know, speak their mind. their mind. Or, or maybe it's, maybe it's even worth doing another poll. I mean, we can make this, make, make this document available online and, and have pe, you know, figure out a way to say, "Hey, you know, what'd you think about the proposed zoning rules? And A, it was good, B, you guys were ridiculous, C, go fly a kite."
Change the whole thing.
Yeah, D, it was awesome, vote now.
See, what I'd be worried about there is kind of the same thing with what Peter came in with tonight. Like, he came in identifying that the wording misled him into thinking that occupancy was required in the frontage, uh, commercial. If we just put it out there and say, "This is it," without providing some kind of context and excellent explanation, I feel like we're gonna go all over the place with the kind of readings that people will take from it and take their takeaways.
But that might help us focus the language so that when we present it at the meeting, all of those misunderstandings have been vetted out, too, right?
It's not just that even the misunderstandings, or, I mean, I read this, and I'm not a zoning person, I didn't understand some of them. And so, I don't know that the average person is gonna understand proposed and current, they're not gonna understand what this is talking about.
Well, and that's largely why I think would be great for Josh to do another session, because he, you know, he's so educa, again, he's, he's an impartial...
Yeah, or you just highlight on the big, the big change ones.
He's educated on the topic.
Maybe we just hi, highlight the big change ones, the, the really important changes.
We should do, what I'll, I'll focus on doing is producing a one-page summary that is an expanded version of this slide, which gets the high-level...
Yeah.
...intended changes that we're trying to do here. And then we can, I think, think of some ways to invite feedback at that higher level.
Yeah.
And then, because I think that's more understandable. And then if, if one of these areas is identified by the feedback we're receiving as sort of an issue, then we can think about how the more detailed language, which is in the zoning proposal, should be adjusted according to that feedback.
Yeah.
Um, I think we can, we can definitely do a community meeting. Uh, we'll try to get the one-pager out ahead of time and can promote the community meeting with the one-pager, I think, in connection with that. And then I think we should try to do...
Do need the property owner meeting.
Yeah, and I'll work with Rich to do a, however we need to work out, meeting some property owners and make that happen. Um, I think that's important as well.
I would think, be, on, on the one-pager, it might even be a paragraph ahead of that says, "Here's our objective, here's what we're really trying to accomplish," without getting into the list of changes that, that are designed to reach that goal. But what is the goal? You know, what, and I know we've articulated a couple times, a few folks have worked on...
Like an, like an executive summary statement or something, yeah, it's a good idea, Walter.
What about, and I threw this out to Rich as an idea, be it a separate day before or after fall town meeting, or whenever, of having a zoning-only meeting? Because then you'll get people that, one, are interested, probably did their homework, and actually care about what all of you guys have been working on here. All right? When it's jammed in between a whole bunch of other articles that eighty people are gonna show up in the fall, one wrong misinterpretation of this guy's work could kill everything.
Yeah.
And I'm just throwing it out, not to be exclusive, but the people that actually are interested will come to, brrr, a zoning town meeting. So, short of that, everyone's just gonna have an opinion. When are we gonna get a Starbucks? I don't want this to become Franklin. You must have heard that already. Uh, I don't know what else. We heard it ten years ago when we had the downtown development committee. All the comments that are coming out, I understand that you have to push the ideas, but at the end of the day, it's the night that it goes to a vote. If they're really interested, they'll be there.
Sometimes, uh, town meetings have been on two nights.
Yeah.
You might structure it that way, if, depending on the length of the warrant, I don't know how much is on the potential warrant.
No, as of right now, there's not a whole lot.
Well, you can split it to s, the fall and spring meeting, you can still do it in two things, too, it's not that far apart. That's a lot to digest all in one...
This topic certainly runs the risk of a long, long, drawn-out conversation at a town meeting, so.
Oh, that's, that's a better way to phrase it, actually. To allow those who are interested in zoning the ability to attend a meeting without having to sit through the...
If it's that important...
Yeah.
Why not make the people focused?
And the va, and the value of doing that, to back into that, is to be able to have a public meeting that, ahead of it, and then people know they, you know, there's a hearing and everything goes to that particular meeting, it's that topic, you know, specifically, so it's not, um...
Okay. Definitely an option, we'll look into it, good idea. Thank you.
Moderator's call, right?
Is it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is it the moderator, or the, oh, select, is it?
Jay Brunson.
No, I think...
So, while I put together, while I incorporate the discussion we've had this evening, think about some of these changes.
Well, let me pause one moment, I was just on the same topic. If hypothetically, we had, it was gonna have its own zone-only meeting, then you would have, you could schedule the warrant when you need to submit to it as well, right? To be flexible, the, okay, here's the warrant for the zoning meeting, it gets submitted...
These guys run that?
No, no, I'm talking, I'm looking back and forth, but I'm just saying...
If you move it, if you move it too far from town meeting, it's, it's almost like you're...
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this is being, happening in a back-to-back night thing. We, we have to keep this condensed to one essential event, just split into two separate nights. I, if that's what the proposal's gonna be, I'm not saying that that's the way we're gonna go, but I think that's the way it has to be framed. No, it can't be separate completely. I think we have to tie this into a single event.
Million-dollar meeting on, uh, January two thousand sixteen, that wasn't tied to a town meeting?
Past precedent, thank you, Peter. Fortunately, I wasn't on the board at that time. Um, but I think, I think we should keep it closer to keep continuity at least, yeah.
All right. So...
Next meeting.
Does, yeah, let's, I think we should try to at least get, like, the candidate week or so, if, if not a full date, established for a working meeting, our next working meeting, but also, um, I guess the range of, the commu, the range of time for the community meeting. Are people uncomfortable with the community meeting occurring in the middle of August? Late, in the second half of August?
I think you should do it after school starts.
In September.
Yeah.
Well, school starts in the middle of August, so.
Oh, you gotta do it September.
It starts August twenty-eighth.
After people are back. After people are back.
School starts August twenty-eighth.
So, the community meeting would be first or second week in September? Because we'd be trying to get this all...
First week is Labor Day.
Turned around for the warrant.
For the end of the month.
End of the month.
So, it's the second week of September. Can't do the first, 'cause it's Labor Day.
So, I have available... The ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth are all open.
Same for me.
Of what month?
September.
September.
So, the second week of September, September ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth, which is a Monday through a Thursday.
Maybe not the eleventh.
Yeah, maybe not September eleventh.
True. So, Rich, maybe, if you could look at...
It's the twelfth, then?
I don't have it on my calendar, but it wouldn't surprise me, it's the right time.
So, maybe Monday or Thursday?
So, ninth, ninth or twelfth.
Ninth or twelfth.
You could maybe see if there's a venue available for us on one of those? And we'll hold, I'll hold those dates for now? And then would we want to meet as a working committee prior to that, to discuss all of this again, to...
I think that makes sense.
Any revisions that I incorporate from this conversation, refinements, uh, that I'd like to continue making to the design guidelines in general, at least, if not some of the other language? And then, uh, I would still request that you all take some more time with this and get more detailed comments back to me in the next two weeks or so?
I, I second Kevin. I think it would be wise for us to get together and review the second draft before the meeting.
And are you all available later in August? I'm not available the last week in August.
That's not a good week, 'cause that's the week school starts. The nineteenth to the twenty-third.
I could do those. It's like all of them.
Twentieth is the Board of Health meeting, so I can't do that.
Probably out of town, but I'm still, just...
For that week, about the previous week?
Week before.
Twelfth or fifteenth?
Here, then, yeah.
Maybe twelfth or fifteenth's a better week.
I could do the twelfth that week, but have other...
If we go to the next week, we don't get Rich.
Is the twelfth reasonably available? August twelfth, for the next committee meeting?
Seventy-thirty for me.
Sounds like a yes.
Oh, wait, is it seventy-thirty, yes?
Seventy-five, twenty-five? Seventy-thirty, yes, huh?
August twelfth, and then we, the community meeting would be approximately a month out from that, on the ninth or tenth of September. So, I think that timing works out pretty well. And then we would plan on having...
And then between now and then, meet with business property owners between the...
Yes, if we can achieve that be, before the twelfth, that would be ideal.
Yeah, as many as we can.
Or at least between the twelfth and the, before the community meeting.
Yeah. It'd be great if we can get it done before the twelfth, I think, maybe, we'll see.
Well, I guess, do, um, does the committee feel comfortable enough with the current state of the zoning, sort of overall, these types of high-level changes and the approach that we're taking, for us to begin talking about these details with business owners? Or would the committee prefer that we do that after the next committee meeting?
I, I think we should start talking to them sooner than later.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good with this.
It might be helpful...
Even if you don't know exact, I think you, the concept, I think you...
I think it's beneficial to tell them it's a draft, too.
And then highlight, you know, kind of the direction of some of the discussions that we've had in the interim, identifying...
They may have some ideas, too.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
That would be beneficial to us.
Good ideas, I meant.
Okay, so we, yeah, I'll work with Rich to try to get those set up as soon as possible.
I do think, though, Rich, it, we should get that community meeting on the calendar sooner rather than later, so that people have time to plan for it.
Yes, what venue, uh, well, yeah, you can reach out to the school, the school.
I was gonna say, can you do it through the school, send a flyer home?
Oh.
The space we were in last time was...
Yeah, you're talking about...
Freeman Kennedy.
Yeah, you can get in the space.
I think we gotta get it on the calendar so people can plan for it.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And like, it shouldn't be one notice, it should be, like, a notice every week.
Yeah.
Right, as a reminder, it's a community meeting.
All right, so we'll check with...
August...
Yeah, we'll check with the school.
Twelve. Maybe every other week.
September.
September, twelfth, see? That's why I need a reminder.
Yeah, we'll shoot for Freeman Kennedy, that's pretty good.
I will say, you know, I, in my dealings in town, social, you know, I think people are pretty encouraged by what, you know, what they hear is going on with the potential downtown, so, there's certainly interest. So, we just gotta figure out how to drum it up and get them to show up at the meeting.
I think the key for our success at town meeting is, is the, the younger families, because they're the ones that I think wanted the changes in the downtown, and they wanted these new things. So, if we can get their support, they'll come out to town meeting and, and vote for it.
I'm a small business owner, you know, and currently looking at downtown, I would never start a business in, in the downtown area right now. It's, it just wouldn't be feasible. Just the, the way the buildings look, how would it accommodate, you know, parking, my staff? It's just, I'm a veterinarian, so, I have a practice in West Roxbury in, in Boston. But, you know, opening up some other area, um, I've always thought about that little building on, um, my husband's not paying attention, I'm not sure what street it's on. Used to be a house, and there's a little building, it used to be like a landscaping company. Something like that would be great, but it needed to be, you know, close to the center of town. Uh, I mean, there's two empty store spaces right now, you know, next to the cleaners and the, um, the variety store. Why has nothing ever gone in there?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we've lived here for twenty-three years, and it's, it's, it's kind of sad to watch how the town doesn't have that kind of vibrancy in the town center and small businesses wanting to come in. So, I'm hoping that this is really something that'll pick everything up and be encouraging. I mean, I, I know that you have some concerns about filling those spaces, but it's kind of like, if you build it, they will come, you know, maybe, hopefully? I, I don't know what to say. I, I mean, but if you don't build it, nothing's gonna come.
Amen.
And I, I live in Rivers Edge, and he built that building there, it's full. That commercial building, it's, every office and every storefront is filled in there. So, I think there is a demand, it's just gotta, you gotta put it in something, there's gotta be a place for it to go, like you said.
All right, so I think we have, we have our marching orders. With the meeting on the twelfth, August twelfth, if you could all pursue getting any comments back to Rich and myself by the second, or even the fifth of August, then that would give us time, give me time to review them, incorporate them with the other changes that I'll be making. And then we can discuss this again...
Yeah.
Uh, on the twelfth, and I'll probably, and I'll spend more, in addition to kind of fixing up the technical aspects of the recommendations, we'll spend a little more time on the, um, I guess, context and preamble of how we got here and why we're here, and, and the outline of the narrative that we'll be presenting at the community meeting. So, I think that would all be helpful for the committee to review and weigh in on.
You know what I think was very effective in the last meeting when you did the survey? Was kind of the pictures of what, what could be, kind of thing. I think those are really great to show, because it creates a vision and an aspiration for people, and, and that, that was very effective when you did that. And I think more of that is, is great.
The, the real-life pictures or the diagrams?
The real-life pictures.
The real-life pictures, all right, yeah, okay.
This is very aspirational, when you see that.
And Walter's gonna write us a mission statement, too.
Well, I thank you all, this has been very helpful and helps us strengthen it, but I think we've made huge progress, and we have actually recommendations that we're all reacting to now, so it's, it's good.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for putting it all together.
Yeah, it's great.